Sarah, did you want one?
Yeah. Please. Thanks.
That's all the information on those. Jake, are you ready?
I'll have Russell. Beth and Sarah, are you ready?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Just want to notify everyone that the meeting is being videotaped and livestreamed. Please stand for the pledge.
For the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so number one on the agenda is executive assistant pay rate. So I've had a chance to take a look at some of the surrounding towns and what their assistant is getting and the administrative assistant. You guys had a chance to take a look and are you good to make a decision this evening?
I took a look at the materials. And I know that we covered this the last time. What's the current pay rate?
What I'm making now?
Okay, so...
We'll take public comment after the three of us talk about it. I'll gladly call you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, so I'm going to recall what I remember of the conversation from back when the Collins Center topic came into play and we were doing the budgets and we were doing the pay rate, just because you guys weren't here. So just to give a little bit of context. And actually, I'm glad that some of the materials are in here, that are in here, because I think it does provide something of a framework. So remember, this decision was being made at the same time that we were exploring putting a town administrator into place, okay? And it relates back to, and I don't recall the vote. It may be indeed that we supported changing the title to administrative, to executive. I don't remember ever changing it for the town of Brookfield to an executive administrator. You're saying this is the...
Yeah, I just want to say that that was done, changing the title was done at a meeting. Changing the grade that was voted against was done on a personnel board.
Okay, but the, well, I just want to...
Why are you laughing, Mary Lou? What's going on?
Oh, come on, Karen. We'll wait. Mary Lou, I promise you'll have an opportunity to come up.
So, so I don't recall, and maybe you have a copy of the vote, I don't recall us voting to change the job title from administrative assistant to executive assistant, but I may not actually recall it, maybe we did, okay? My understanding at the time, in the context of what was going on broader in the town, is that we were going to be bringing in a town administrator, that a lot of the higher level roles called out in the executive administrative role, which weren't necessarily being conducted at the time by Karen in that position, were going to go to the town administrator. And a good example is Chief Procurement Officer. At the time, I think she was officially on the books as our Chief Procurement Officer. Highway was doing all of their own procurement. We tried to keep the amount of procurement as minimal as possible up through the Town Hall and limit the scope of that work, right? There's a lot of information here about not just being liaison to the department heads, but also to like local entities, federal and state agencies. There's not a lot of that type of activity, as I understand it, and that I don't see in the traffic from Karen relative to like that executive level administrative work for the town, okay? So what I recall at the time was that we actually voted to keep it as an administrative assistant and not as an executive assistant, and that it was based on that, that, and the executive assistant doesn't appear in our bylaws, I don't believe. Okay, I believe what appears is administrative assistant, okay? And there wasn't a vote to go ahead and put on our town meeting warrant for that year associated with the pay rate changes to, that in order to justify any form of pay rate change, we would have actually had to put that role in the bylaw. We would have had to change her role, as well as then change the grade associated with it. So that's what I recall of the conversation, is that because a lot of the, let's call it executive level work, was going to come out of the actual position and job description because the town administrator would be fulfilling the project management, the liaison with KP Law, like all of that work was going to come off of Karen's plate and go on to the town administrator's plate, that there wasn't necessarily a justification to move from the title that had been used historically, even though historically that role had done a lot of that work, okay? That for the most part, things like the liaison with the legal folks came from the chair directly with KP Law. And just, there's a lot of things, if you go through like item by item of, like when you look at the difference between...
We can go through it, because I did have contact, direct contact with KP Law. And also, I want to tell you, if you look at the two, I gave you two job descriptions, one for the administrative assistant. That was compiled in 2011. There was not even a thought of a town administrator at that point. And if you look at 2011's along with the executive assistant, they're both basically the same, which is the whole reason why Mary said this is an executive position, not just an administrative assistant position. And I want to say something else. The reason that it didn't go, it didn't go any further as to go to town meeting or anything else is because when it went before the Personnel Board, it was shot down. So it never went any further. I got the title, but I couldn't get the pay raise like everyone else got. So basically, that ended there, that's why it didn't...
Yeah, I don't think there was room to give you the title, because we can't give a title that's not in the town bylaws.
Well, the Selectman vote, I know. If you want to go back and find the minutes...
Well, I hate to put this way, select boards can do all kinds of erroneous or not necessarily in keeping with either mass general law of the town bylaws through not properly investigating what they can and can't legally support or under the framework of whatever the rules are support. So I'm not saying that the vote didn't happen, and I'm not saying that the vote wasn't in favor of it being an executive assistant, okay? What I'm saying is that I don't know that the board would have, by right, just the board have the purview to make that change.
Or the authority outside of the town meeting, right?
Outside of the town meeting.
Right, and I believe that it was, it probably would have gone to town meeting if the grade was accepted, that's what I'm saying. It just kind of stalled in the middle. But one other thing, moving that aside, okay, so the executive assistant, if you look at just for the administrative assistant, I'm still grossly underpaid. And...
Well, I just wanted to take that piece first.
Okay.
I want to take that piece first, is that, let's just make sure that we're grounded in the fact that we do not have an executive administrative assistant position available in the town of Brookfield today, okay?
Yeah, I couldn't find it, and I don't want to sit here and think that I can supersede the voters, right? So I agree with you.
So we have to be careful of that sort of thing. Now, pay rates within the pay grade for a particular position are within our purview, so I'm fine with, if we want to discuss that piece of it. So, and because what I see here, right, is that there's no range under Westbrook Fields, they just have the max, right? And Wales only has the max, I don't know what their bottom is. Warren is 22 to 29. North Brookfield...
I have been here 11 years, by the way.
Right, okay. Do we know how long these other folks have been in their positions?
No.
In Braintree, in North Brookfield, and what the step, did those other towns have the step information relative to like what years in service would be?
No, this is from the Collins, and it's basically the survey, average, maximum survey, even if you go to the survey medium, median, maximum, it's still, it's, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel that in 2018 or 2019, when we had the Collins report, that everyone got a substantial raise except for me, okay? I got three cents. So I just think, and I've been pretty faithful, I think, having major surgery, coming right back to work at six weeks, having a couple of other little health blips, coming right to work. I work 40 hours a week, I'm available if people text me, or not email, but text me on the weekends. You know, I just, I believe that $25 an hour isn't very much for what I do, and I hope you would agree, because I think it's black and white.
After you, anything else? Sarah, do you have?
I've talked a lot, so I want to get some of the folks' opinions.
Sarah?
I don't know, I'm thinking.
All right. I'm going to open it up, I'm going to open it up to the audience, and if you want to get...
Okay, I just do want to make one statement. I would like to hear from anybody who wants to speak from public statement. I personally would, and I know this is not going to be necessarily a popular request, I would like to kick the can to our next meeting for a final decision, because I'd like to take this and see if I can get their actual pay charts for step and grade, because I bet that that's a public document in all of those towns, if they have it, so that we can get a feel for what 11 years in that role at that title would look like in those communities, and do it as like a lightweight, real wage survey, personally.
Okay. Mary Lou, do you mind coming up?
Mary Lou Knight, 20 Lane 21. I was here last week. I did not speak because I wanted to research and make sure that I was speaking facts. I put together the packet for you. The first page is simply the survey from the Collins Center, showing that the administrative assistant for the Board of Selectmen pay rate was $2.66 above the local average.
At the time.
Which is why there was no raise involved. There was also no reduction in pay at that time. The next thing I'd like to address is the discussion about a motion at the Personnel Board. I went through six years of minutes, I was clerk for six years on the Personnel Board. The first mention I find is February 19th. Position of Executive Assistant for the Board of Selectmen at a grade five was presented. Committee will review the job description, discuss at the next meeting. Next meeting on March 4th. Motion was made by Linda Lincoln to change the title of Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant to Executive Assistant, change the grade from four to five. Motion did not receive a second. Motion was then made by Doug Ford to change the title of the Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant, but to keep the grade at four. Seconded by Cindy Thompson, motion passed. That's the only reference I can find in the Personnel Board to the executive assistant position. I also printed out the Personnel bylaws showing the approved positions in Brookfield, does not show the executive assistant. That's all.
So, in a situation like this where the title was changed, and this was an administrative shortfall between ourselves and the Personnel Committee, ourselves being the Select Board and the Personnel Committee at the time, right, is if they did a vote like that, what should have been submitted on the next town meeting more would have been a town of Brookfield change, to at least change the title even if the grade was not to be changed, so...
And you don't know that that was done?
Oh, well, I know for a fact we never put it, I know we didn't put it on a town meeting warrant.
Okay.
And those are the updated bylaws that are on our website, so it's not in effect today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yep, sure.
If you folks think I'm not worth more than $25 an hour, then just don't give it to me, okay? I think it's absolutely absurd when you look at how long I've been here and the work that I'm doing and the dedication that I have to the town. I don't understand it, and I hate to say it, it's personal. Many people know that, it's true, Beth, I'm not saying you, but many people know that.
So, there's a reason why I wanted to kick the can, Karen.
Okay.
Is that when these documents are put together by places like the Collins Center, it's based on market data, okay? And I hear what you're saying about you feel that you personally deserve additional compensation in what you've been given up to this point, okay? One of the things as a board, and I've been on the board, so I'm, for the longest, so I own it the most, is that we haven't done annual, when we got rid of the stepping grade charts, right, and I don't remember why, but I think fundamentally, when we were going through all the churn with the accountants and treasurers and what have you, right, it takes a certain amount of work to keep those up, and we had never abided by them anyway, okay, which would give people a reasonable expectation, hey, if I do 11 years, I'm going to get this step increase, right? We did away with that, we didn't put into place annual reviews, we're based on performance, people can get feedback on how they're doing, what they're doing, and whether they're meeting standards or not, right, which you then generally transfers in a normal work environment, that's what determines your pay grade, right? All I want to do, and I'm not saying I don't want to do it for you, Karen, all I want to do is due diligence on behalf of the town, right, to do a genuine wage survey in the role, because there's two aspects of pay, the person and the position. We can't just spontaneously say, you know what, Karen should get $29 an hour because she's great, because that's personal too, right? That's me saying, just saying on behalf of it. Well, what we got budgeted, right, what the town totals to spend is what we presented, right? So if we're going to deviate from that, I think we need a good justification.
But there are other, why other people? When other people come before and they have more responsibility, which you know I'm going to have, once we don't have a TA, because we're not going to have a TA pretty soon, and first I want to clarify that this paperwork is for the administrative assistant, before any extra work from Ron, but I know that I'm going to have extra work that was Ron's. Whenever other people had to fill in or take over, there was never any of this pass it on to the next week, or I'm going to have to do a wage survey.
Oh, sure there was.
I'm thinking specifically Lindsay and Patty, I mean, just for, just off the top of my head. It was just, you needed them to pitch hit when you were missing, when someone left, and you just, bam, the gavel went down, and make up the money.
So I was prepared to make a decision tonight based on the information we have, but I think I might have been selling you short, because when Brenda lost her, and I'm sorry, I can't remember, it was one of her in-laws, and she was away, I asked you if you would step it up and take care of the people that were dropping off excise tax, and you did that. I've contacted you on many occasions after hours, and you've been willing to accommodate, whether it was something for the agenda or whatever it was, you always answer your phone, either I call or text, you've been very accommodating for that. So I'm sorry that I haven't told you more how much I appreciate having you around, but I think in all fairness, I might be selling you short to make a recommendation tonight for a raise. I would like to hear what Beth comes back with, with research, and then I can make...
Make them out higher than what you were looking for, I mean, there's no number, there's no number yet.
And make a better informed decision in this role. So unless, you know, so, you want to throw a motion out there, Beth, to...
Well, I am curious, so, and there's a couple of different formats and structures that we've taken when we pay people to step up, like, and I'll give you an example. In the police contract, and that's why I want to separate the, what it's for, right, and I want to take some of the emotion out of this, because this is supposed to be something that we're doing both on behalf of taking care of the employee...
Employee, yeah.
And taking care of the town, right? We have an obligation both directions, okay? And just remember, we were always torn between that obligation in both directions. In the police contract, if the sergeant takes over for the chief, it's a certain amount per day, or per week, or per whatever, when he takes over that duty, right? I think at one point, when Cindy and Don took up the highway superintendent work, on a different time when we were without a highway superintendent, we came up with some, like hourly adjustment just for that period of time while there was a gap. So, so part of the question is, right, you're saying there's an underlying insufficiency one, so there's like two or three questions on the table, right? And I think we have to divide them, and we have to divide, and we have to decide them separately. One is, is the current pay aligned with the market and the job description?
With years of service, right?
With years of service, right?
That's one part.
Okay, that's one question, okay? Now, I will also tell you, in any job, if you've been in it a long time, you wind up getting hosed, because the way people get big pay raises these days is to change jobs.
Yeah.
Right, okay, with no disrespect, and I think we need to do a better job of rewarding people for longevity, that's why a couple times we've tried to do the longevity bonuses, but a sad fact is, is if you stay in the same role frequently, you feel that way, because then other people are getting the benefit of that market assessment when they come into the new job. So one of the things to try to take a little bit out of it is that it, sometimes it's not personal, it's structural. If you stay in a role, you're going to tend to get fewer of those market adjustments than a person who is coming in from an outside in a role. It's just, it's just a fact of life.
I've seen it here recently with a highway, right? I mean, it went from, yeah, so I get that.
Yeah, so, so I think we, I think we do owe you the real market survey to say, is the current pay rate, time and grade in the role as defined inadequate? And then currently, Ron is still supposed to be fulfilling a number of the functions that fall under the town administrator.
But there's clearly more work with him not being in the building.
But there's clearly...
So we'll, we adjust that as well.
Right, so, so it may be that there's a adjustment...
And it's a different conversation, though, of course.
Right, but it's a separate, but it's a separate conversation.
Yeah, conversation, yes.
Exactly.
Yes, I agree, I 100% agree. It's two totally different things.
Right, and I want to make sure we divide those things.
Yes, I agree.
And that's why I want to take the time, and, you know, we've done it before, where when we did the police officer hiring of the guy that was still in the, in school, right, we did it like, I think we did the pay rate retroactive or something, we did something to make it right. So, so I'm also comfortable with whatever decision we make, I would be comfortable putting it on the board as retroactive to today, but I want to make the right decisions.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so...
So, Karen?
Yes.
Don't feel like we're not doing the right thing by you, because we are, we're going to.
Okay.
No matter what happens, it's going to be retroactive, if there's a, right? So, so, yeah, all right, if we're good with that, I'd like to move on, but thank you for what, excuse me, thank you for what you do, and thank you for stepping it up, and thank you for taking the calls and texts after hours.
So...
Come on up there.
Dave Holcraft, 26 Allen Road. You know, I don't care about the titles, executive, if she's Sergeant of Arms, Assistant, whatever, Secretary, the titles, the titles is not the issue here. The fact is, she's been here a long time, she's done the job, and, yeah, she got missed a raise personally for what took place, I know so. And she's doing the job here, and she's dependable, she's here all the time, and with, she ran the whole show in this town before we had a town administrator. Did we all forget that? And even the town administrators give her work to do. So, you know, we should give her five bucks, it's 40 bucks a day. This town wastes more than that in a day. I mean, we got somebody, you're always worrying about losing somebody, let's keep her here. Give her a few bucks, give her the five bucks an hour, whatever, and let's move on. You got somebody here, let's keep her.
Thank you. But I do want to reiterate that I, based on, based on what I was prepared tonight, I think I'd be selling you short. I think when Beth comes back with the research, I think you'll do better by waiting a week, and it's going to be retroactive, so that's, I'd like to end it there and move on. Are you guys good with that?
I am.
All right, thank you. All right, number two, the grant writer position. So the resume that I read...
I did include a resume, because I happened to get a super, super duper candidate at the last minute just yesterday, and I just wanted to include it. Obviously, we'll have to go through the process, but I wanted you to know that there was someone that was willing to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I had a chance to read over the resume earlier today, and I thought, really good resume. This is, this is like a blessing in disguise, maybe. So, did we contract with Roughly Consulting for the second portion? So, okay, so we have, so this is probably something for the Rice Corner Road culvert.
No, not yet.
No, I haven't drawn a price yet.
So, so this would be, I would, I would think that we would call this person in and have a discussion about running the grants after they're awarded, going with the grants, picking and choosing what, and I would like the Board of Selectmen to have more input on the grants that we would like to be sought, rather than just any grant for the sake of applying, but I think it's clear that this person has this extensive history with grants, and I just want to make sure she followed them through, and I would be in favor of, if the interview works out, I would be in favor of hiring this person right away.
You can never tell on paper, but yeah.
No, that's why I say if the interview goes as good as the resume, I would...
Yeah, if Karen wants to call, yeah, set up an interview.
Do you want to have her interviewed at a Select Board meeting? Is that how you want to do it?
Yeah.
I think it's probably our best choice right now.
I'm, I'm going to throw this out there, I'm good with not being part of the interview. I would offer it to one of you and maybe the town treasurer, or a town accountant or something, someone that would be willing to help, but I don't, I don't know enough about this position to be part of it, and I, I think Sharon or Lori and one of you guys, I would feel just as comfortable. But, I mean, it's, we could do it in a Select Board meeting as well, but I'm, this is why...
I mean, I would have to do it in an evening anyway, which is bad for both Sharon and Lori, though Lori sometimes can make it to evening meetings.
I don't know, I'm open to either one.
Unless somebody wants to have an interview at like 7:30 in the morning, my two choices are 7:30 in the morning and after 6:30 at night right now, so...
Are you available during the day?
I know what I... I know what I'm looking for, for a grant writer, so, yeah.
Are you willing to do that with me, with Lori, or Sharon, or both?
Yeah, sure.
Have Karen set it up for you guys?
Okay, I'll make a motion that Sarah be authorized to be our representative for holding an interview with Lynn Shaw.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I do have one question, though. It was very clear that the intent of that individual, highly skilled, and I don't think it's a problem in the role, but I just want to make sure that we're clear on it, right?
For weekly pay?
Historically, it's, well, no. Historically, it's been a predominantly onsite role. They're looking for a hybrid role, and it is a bit of a hike.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure we're aligned, that it would be okay to do, say, one day a week onsite.
Yes.
The balance of the job being remote.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd like to see-
Because for that work, it's not a problem.
Like a 50/50, maybe? Or what do you, no, not even?
No, because honestly, I think she can do it 100% remote, I'm not going to lie.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Honestly, the, the, the one, the one day a week would be predominantly just to get to know people and get them, and like, hold meetings with the department heads-
Have one-on-one conversation with the department heads, yeah.
Of what they want to pursue.
But when you think about how much money is available, it's not, it's not that much money, right? So we, didn't we agree to pay the $6,000 for the Gay Road Grant? Did we talk about paying that out of the grant writer position?
Let me pull it up. It's, it was out of the-
It's $24,000 a year that's available for the grant writer. So I don't even know that we're going to get someone one day a week.
Oh, yeah, we will.
Yeah.
Well, it's less $6,000.
Well, we posted.
Right. But, but let's just be clear about it. So you said it was, what, $16,000 is what's budgeted?
I think it's $24,000.
$24,000.
So $24,000, right?
And then we took six.
Right. But, but, but we've got, so we took six, so we've got $18,000. And how many weeks?
Actually, it's not much, yeah.
No, it's actually pretty good.
Thirty years gone already, right?
Right. I mean, we're, we're, we're in October already, so we've got, so functionally speaking, it would probably be starting-
November.
Say, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June. So it's eight months.
Hmm.
So eight months.
What did you say, 10, 10 hours a week?
I believe it was 10 or 12.
10 or 12, I think we posted.
So I think we would be fine.
Yeah.
So, so if it's, wait a second.
Just for simple math, say 32 weeks at eight hours a week.
So, so it's 16 hours a week for the balance of the year?
Do we go that much, huh? Okay.
If I'm doing my math right, right? So it's $34 an hour is what's posted?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Times, what do we call it? Eight months is how many weeks?
Say it's a 60 weeks.
32 weeks, right? Eight months is 32 weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's 12 hours a week at $34 an hour.
No, that's, comes out to be $13,000. That would leave $5,000 over in the wages, so. So even at, yeah, so.
Okay.
So there's, there's room.
All right.
There's room for right now.
Anything else?
We might have to budget a little more robustly next year.
Yeah, yeah.
So something to be aware of, but.
All right.
We've worked out.
Number three, resignation for Council on Aging Director.
So, so do we have any more information than what's in the resignation?
I've heard from a couple of the-
I don't know. I looked at a couple of the Council on Aging agendas that were posted on my town government to kind of see the timeline. But as far as that, no.
Because, and I actually meant to call a couple of people before this meeting, and I didn't, because-
I can't really, I don't have anything to substantiate it, other, you know, based on what was said, because it was kind of informal, but I don't know. I get the idea she was, wasn't happy, and was wanting to move on.
Okay.
I thought everything was going great initially, and I don't, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Well, I guess a lot happened, but-
That it maybe wasn't visible to us, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I mean, obviously, motion to accept with regrets.
Number four, resignation of our highway worker, one of our operator truck drivers. So it's my understanding that he was offered a higher position where he came from. And in speaking to him, he said it was a fair amount more money where he was going to, better equipment to work with, better trucks, better all the way around. And based on that, I, I had a discussion with Kyle, and that's going to lead us to number five. But I'd just like to finish up with number four, with his resignation, that I, I thought he was, anytime that I met with him, he was very respectful and good, so I'm kind of bummed to see him go. But according to Kyle, he's got a couple of people that are, that he's interviewing, so I'm good with that. So number five, highway department pay discussion for the mechanic.
We're going to vote to accept the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and actually, we never voted to accept the other resignation. So I'll amend my motion to accept both the resignations of the Council on Aging Director and the highway worker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And sorry that I jumped the gun, so. Number five, the highway department pay discussion for our mechanic. I know what he's capable of. He's worked, done small projects for me in the past. I saw his work when he worked in North Brookfield. And if anyone approached him and offered him more money to go, we would be up the creek without a paddle, frankly, because our equipment is not in the best of the shape. And if we don't get it in better shape soon, we're going to be looking at maybe a half million dollars or more by the time we buy a backhoe and a couple of trucks. So I think we can maybe kick the can down the road a little while longer with the backhoe and the trucks. They're all rebuildable. The backhoe would probably be the one that would go first, but the trucks are salvageable. But we need our mechanic in place. So.
How do we know what's the right number? Because I'm going to ask you the same question I did on the administrative assistant.
That's a very good point, because I don't know how to quantify that by going to other communities.
Okay.
Because it's my opinion, I haven't seen a mechanic around that can do what this guy can do. What I, he can, he can weld, he can fabricate, he can wrench. There's, there's nothing he can't do-
Right.
-on our equipment. And I don't know of a highway department around that has his skills. So to quantify that, like what you're talking about, I don't know how we do that. But I do know that if another department came in and we lost him, we are in big trouble. So he's $35 an hour and change, and I'm, and I'm prepared to pay him $39 an hour to make sure he's happy and he stays.
Kind of want to treat the topic the same, though. I'd like to at least make an attempt to get some numbers.
I get it, but I-
Well, well, we may find that that's even low. I mean, it can go, it can go either way, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
The reason why I want to do that is because that could call, fall either side of the, that could fall either side of the line.
I did check around, and I don't know how to find someone that's comparable with his skills to the other departments around.
I don't know, I want to see the same thing that we're going to do for Karen.
And again, I don't object to if we decide that, hey, we're going to make an adjustment.
Yeah, we can do retro.
Right. So I'll make a motion that we conduct a wage survey for both the positions discussed tonight, with any modifications to be retroactive. Because that was a discussion, but not a vote. Is there a second?
I'll second. Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, highway department credit card with a limit of $2,500. So the same individual has been calling around to get different materials, parts, supplies that we need. And he, he's so diligent that he'll check with other vendors that he's aware of that we've not done business with before, but we can't just all of a sudden buy. So this was a request from our highway superintendent-
Yeah.
-to do this, so.
Kyle and I talked about this at length, actually. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he initially said $500 limit, but frankly, there's not much you can buy for a piece of heavy equipment for 500 bucks. So I'm good with the 25. I suggested the 2,500. So I'll-
Did we talk to Lori about it already?
I did not.
Okay. Because the only, I, because you have a town credit card, don't you?
No, I do not.
So I think, I think-
Years ago, we did, and then it was stopped until it came up for it.
Okay.
Used to happen that we could fund through our vouchers personally, each department, and then use the card, that's where we could use it. So we don't have-
Oh, so it had to be funded in advance, and then you could take the card and use your budget?
Something like that.
Okay. So, so I'd like to make a motion to approve it conceptually, pending appropriate execution method from the town accountant.
Yep. Okay. I'll second. Oh, you second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Road repairs policy discussion. Some time ago, Don Taft came to the board, asked to be put on the agenda. This was one of the items that Don wanted to be put on for, and I had Ron do some research, and he had done it. And basically, Don's road, is that Lane 21, Don?
Yes.
Yeah. So basically, Lane 21, and Don Taft qualifies for our bylaw.
I think you have only put it up.
I just brought that, that's the bylaw, those are the forms, those are the waivers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was my requested work to be done.
Yeah. So, did you, and you-
We just brought this up earlier today.
Okay.
We moved it out when the meeting started. And I think we have most of that in there already, but.
So I'm good, I'm good to accept that. Do we need to take the vote to have that work done?
I thought so long as it complied with the bylaw. Well, how does the bylaw read?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I thought that as long as he, there were three people on the road, I, I thought it was almost a given, but I thought we would quantify it by taking a vote.
So we would, we have to, we have to declare the repairs to be a public necessity, right? So, so we need to just take a vote that, that the repair is appropriate?
Yeah. So I drove through there a couple of weeks ago. There's some good-sized potholes. It would just help with snow plowing coming up.
Okay.
And it'd just be easier on equipment, so I'm good with it.
So, I guess the only question is, this says that we're discussing the road repair policy. Do we need to?
I think it was an oversight, but if it, if it comes to that-
Can we put it, let's put it on next week's.
Yeah. We can put it on specific to Lane 21.
Yes.
Karen, would you do that? Thank you.
But, yeah.
I don't want to lose that.
And?
Are we good?
I think we're good.
Okay.
And I apologize that we're not taking it up today, but the way it's posted, I don't feel comfortable voting it.
Number eight, it was brought to my attention, week, two weeks ago, that the pumps weren't working down at the highway department since then they are for the, for basically gasoline. The biggest gasoline user is the police department. I spoke with the chief. He said that his officers that needed fuel were paying for it out of pocket at Cumberland's, and then putting in for reimbursement. I thought it would be a good opportunity to get him a couple of gas cards for the police department, in case we have that problem again. The officers shouldn't be paying for the gas in the cruiser, is my opinion. Even though they're going to be reimbursed, I thought a gas card would be appropriate. And if that, if Lori's good with that, if we can get that by Lori, I'd like to do the same with them.
Yeah, I'll make a motion pending identifying an appropriate method with the accountant, getting the police a credit card predominantly for gas. It would just be a generic card, I think, and then it would-
Yeah.
They could use it for that.
Yeah, exactly.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for one-day pouring license for 4 and 3 on Main Sturbridge at Overlook Event.
Make a motion to approve the one-day pouring license for 413 on Main Sturbridge for the overlook event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number 10, we've had two open meeting law complaints. We do have a response for those. It's a draft, so have you guys had a chance to take a look at it? Is there anything else you'd like to add to it? Or are we good with sending it off the way it is?
I think one thing we need to really take a look at, I'm, it's been probably going on 10 years since I took my open meeting law training. I think we may all want to sit through the online training again, since there's just been such a preponderance of violations, to maybe remind us about what topics are appropriate, not appropriate for open meeting versus executive session, et cetera, and so forth.
I would say there's been more complaints than violations. The violations have been relatively small, but I would be in favor of taking that class also. But I just, I don't want to split words with you, but I think the bulk of them have been complaints, but not violations.
So I think this one has some merit in that, and it's happened a couple of times, and I haven't probably done a good enough job playing topic cop. But there's a couple of things we do need to be very careful of, and it's especially where there's that division between job performance and character discussions.
I think, I think the class is appropriate, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, I don't know if we want to include that in the response specifically, but just, yeah, I think we really need to make sure that we're staying on topic, right? And make sure that it's aligned.
Well, I think it'll be determined whether we're on topic or not, but-
Yeah.
I feel like, though I could have done better, I don't think it's a violation, but I, we'll see. I'm good with the way it's written. Are you, Sarah? I'm good with the way it's written. Are you, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Beth?
I don't have a specific change to it, but I think I'm going to abstain from voting on it, or just. I don't know that we're. I don't know that I'm aligned with the messaging that's in this particular one.
Okay. All right, I have a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I have a second.
And have Ron turned off when I amended?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the town administrator to submit this response.
Is that one or two?
Both.
Both. These responses here.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on up.
Doesn't have to be unanimous.
Bruce Clark. What is the topic of the open meeting law complaint?
We can give you a copy of it if you would like.
No, I believe it's, we had to read them at our highway department meeting.
I don't know that it has to be read at a meeting, but we can.
Well, the document's submitted, so I mean, if you want the red for the camera, we can.
Well, I mean, we, we did it at our meetings, and we had one. I just thought that was, no.
It doesn't have to be read, but you can, I just offered you a copy.
I have a copy.
Of the response?
No, 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 I'll, I'll read the response.
Okay, so what's your question?
He wants us to read the, the alleged violation that we just discussed.
I thought that was, I thought that was protocol.
I don't think it's technically a requirement, but I think it's a, potentially a fair ask.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to read it.
Okay.
All right, number 10. All right, we're done with 10. Number 11, asbestos abatement for former roller rink at Pine Lane. Top-notch abatement came out today to take a look at the site. I was not able to meet them. Ernie from the highway department came out, and I'm waiting to hear back what the outcome will be for the asbestos. I spoke with Don Taft a week ago about, this is, this is a project that he would like to see done, and, and I'd like to see it done, frankly, because of the condition of it and how much it's decayed and the danger. So the minute that the ground is froze, I'm hoping that we can go in there with the highway department and take that building down. And part of the building inspector's requirement was getting the asbestos abatement done at the former rink. The, the.
So, so.
Top-notch asbestos abatement was the cheapest price that I got. They were roughly $300. The next one was four-something, and the next one was like $1,100. So I did seek three quotes, and they thought they could come out last week. She couldn't, but she was out today.
Okay, so it's done? Abatement's done?
She took a couple of samples, and it will be tested. I think the samples are $30 each sample, and when that's complete, then we will know if there's asbestos in the building or not.
I mean, if, if there's those 1950s tiles in there, then we know asbestos is in the building.
Well, it's just part of the process.
Okay.
We can't do anything about it. Like, if it's there, then, and it comes back that it's asbestos, we then have to have it removed by a professional.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear that pending the results of that check, that the next step will be that we'll have to get a quote for the actual removal.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't want our highway department getting anywhere near that.
It, it's a state law that it has to be done by a professional.
Right, looks like we have a couple of questions from.
Come on up, Steve.
Steve Carmen, Chair of the Brookfield Conservation Commission. This project had come before us last year, and there was a consideration about whether this project would require permitting, and at that point, we perhaps did things out of step with our bylaws in the Wetlands Protection Act. This is work within a resource area, so it should at least go through the permitting process. It doesn't need to be that overwhelming, assuming that the asbestos test comes back. That's outside of conservation purview, anyway. But it sounds like the conditions that were in place that were informally discussed last year about waiting for the ground to be frozen and the lake to be frozen, so there would be like no debris that could be, that would cause contamination issues. We're all good. But just to make sure that we're in the, in step with our bylaws for permitting, I think we should go through, through the RDA process for this as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think first, we're going to do the, get the quote right and figure out if we need to, and then move on. I don't think it's going to happen till the springtime or the winter time, I thought.
Well, it's supposed to happen when the, when the ground's frozen.
Yeah, so we're not talking until next year.
No, we're talking this year.
Well.
I think, I think if we're going to do, if, if the conservation is going to require going through the process, would you volunteer to take that on? Excuse me, would you volunteer to take that on for the town, or how would you, or would you like the town to hire an engineer to?
Or anybody, rather, any, anybody who can represent the project. I think we've had commissioners in the past, or all boards clerks when Sarah was on there, to step in, but I think it was because we did not have an administrative role to take on these responsibilities as the applicant for the town. But the conservation commission should be reviewing the applications. They should not be submitting the applications.
Yeah, no, he's a hundred percent, he's a hundred percent correct, so.
So then we would, yeah, we'd need to hire somebody to, to do the application.
Well, you know what, I, I think, honestly, this is something Ron can do. He should be able to do it. And we'll see why he can't.
Yeah, the RDA is good for.
There is some.
Two, three years. Three years. So you can go through it now, even if, we can make a contingent on some, some aspects, like even if you don't get the asbestos report back.
Contingent on that.
It could be contingent on that, but we could set, we could work with the applicant, whoever they may, may be, to set the order of conditions about making sure that there's no issues.
He can get, he can get the building inspector, I'm sorry, go ahead, you started before I did.
Yeah, sorry, only to say that, but the person that we pick is going to have to be able to talk about the project, I guess, is kind of your point, Steve, too. Yeah, so Ron or whoever we pick is going to be, have to be actually to be able to represent the project and answer all of their questions that they're going to have.
Yes, through an RDA, there will be a butler notification, it's a public hearing, and the conservation commission will make a determination.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good end to the project.
And they'll have to go to the meeting to, okay.
That's true, but he might not be done by 30 November. That's the only thing is, he's on a.
Exactly.
He's on a short fuse, so.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to pick him and then have to show up to the meeting.
So, I mean, most of the work is probably going to fall under highway, but what do we need for that? We need the building inspector, we, we need, I just, just on a high level, right, we need, well, it's probably not on the agenda.
We already have a demo permit.
We already have the demo permit?
But after the fact, Jeff thought about it and said that we should have the asbestos.
Right.
Asbestos abatement, so.
So all the paperwork's done except for asbestos abatement and.
And conservation.
Conservation.
But the conservation is, can be cumbersome.
So I'll.
Well, it depends, and to start an RDA to one meeting, so it's really going to depend what the commission requires, because they could, he could start with an RDA, and then the commission could say that, yes, they're, it's going to make an impact to the wetland and require an NOI. So I think it's going to depend on what the conservation commission decides.
On the RDA.
On the RDA.
Mm-hmm. Now granted, the commission is in a different state than they were last year, but when we informally reviewed this last time, without an RDA, the commission was in, in agreement about the informal conditions that were in place to protect the wetlands, about it being winter, the ground being frozen over, and whatever sediment controls are in place to ensure that there is no contamination from the demolition.
Yeah, that's a whole different group.
It's a different group now, yes.
But all those conditions would potentially get the same answer.
Yeah.
Presumably, but Sarah is right that it falls upon the commission to make a determination, and it falls upon the applicant to hold the burden of proof, to prove to the commission that this project will not have a negative impact on the wetlands. So that's just the process, but I think the commission would be happy to work with whoever the applicant is, provide guidance on that, participate in site visits and all of that to make sure this process can go smoothly, but still, we are beholden to our bylaws in the Wetlands Protection Act.
Do you want to talk to Kyle and see if he or Scott would be willing to come to the commission? Kyle's pretty well-versed in erosion control, so isn't Scott?
Well, what I was going to offer, actually, to save them from having to go to an evening meeting, was that I'll take it on to do the RDA, but I'm going to ask them for a bunch of help, making sure that I get all the right stuff.
Well, they could do the erosion control portion.
Yeah, they can, they can just, they can just inform me, and I can handle the meeting bit of it, I think is what, what we could do with that.
So you'll, you'll do the RDA, and then you'll pass it off to Kyle? Because we're, we're starting astray too much.
No, I understand, okay. So let's put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
I just want to bring that up because it's been on our radar for about a year now.
Yeah, so let's put it on the next agenda.
I maybe should have stopped you in your tracks, but. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Bruce?
Yeah.
Point of clarification on the open meeting law violations. One or two violations submitted.
Two.
I'd like, I just wanted to hear that.
Yep, there was.
And why isn't the town the applicant?
So Bruce, we're moving, we've already moved on from that, so if you wanted to discuss that.
No, building, the building, the building.
Okay.
Why isn't the applicant the town of Brookfield?
Well, that's why I'm offering to.
No, no, I mean, like, they went to Jeff Taylor. This town's torn down many buildings without going to a contractor for a license.
We're not going to a contractor for a license.
Every single, every single building that was torn down has had a, a license. Steve Budneck, it's my.
By the town?
I, I just asked.
I, I believe Steve Budneck used to do it for Herbie. Could be wrong, but.
I think you're wrong, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
He's asking, so your specific question was, why do we need a demo permit?
No, why do you need a demo permit from somebody else on the town of Brookfield?
We're not saying we need a demo permit from anyone other than.
We do.
With, with, not on the town of Brookfield, that's the contract.
We're starting astray. It's going, it's, this.
Yeah.
Topic was asbestos abatement for the roller rink on the compound.
And you brought up the permitting process. Because the.
I think actually Steve brought up the permitting process.
Yeah.
Steve.
No, 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 the asbestos abatement follows the building permit.
That's correct.
And all I'm saying is, so who's the applicant on the permit application? And why isn't the town of Brookfield that applicant?
I, I'm not going to get myself into an open meeting law violation. It's, it's, I'm not going to talk about.
We're going to put this on the next agenda.
The fact of the matter is, I followed what the building inspector asked to have done, so. All right, number 12, the police department monthly report for the month of August. And then item number 13, I'm going to touch on this just briefly, because again, I don't want an open meeting law violation for this, but I'm not going to take it under the, under 48 hours. We're not going to talk about it for that, because the meeting, it was put on the meeting at 7:30, so it, it gets us 47 and a half hours, so I, I'm sorry, but we can put it for next week. In speaking with the contractor today, I don't think there's any reason to take it as an emergency. Do you?
So long as no one intends to get in the way of the work that Kyle needs to do, given that he really should be in the primary role as project manager, to get the paperwork from the neighbors that we need to get, because that's typically the long lead in something like this. So as long as no one plans on getting in the way.
It was starting to get, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we're.
I gave Kyle, I gave Kyle some direction to go work with KP Law to get some, some paperwork, so long as no one's going to try to get in the way of, of me going rogue and, and telling them that.
But we're getting, we're starting astray too much, so I'm going to say we move on, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, that being.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.